Good evening. The January 24th, excuse me, 2017 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. I would like to ask members of the audience to please remove their hats. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on this separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Ms. Lynn Nobles, Coordinator for Career and Technical Education, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
It gives me a great deal of pleasure to be able to introduce to you some of the students that represent our career and technical programs across the district. We have eight high schools, one's a specialty school, and we have 10 middle schools that offer career and technical programs in our district. The first student I'm going to call forward, and I'm going to have them stand up here so that you can see the diversity between the types of students that we have in our programs and what programs they represent, will be Tyler Chaffin from Bellevue High School. He is representing our HOSA program, which is our Health Occupation Students of America. Also from Forest High School, we have Kenya Massey and Keishon Ward, who represent the agricultural program. Mr. Ward here has earned the industry certification for FNGLA, which is the Horticulture or Nursery Growers Association Certification. Representing MTI with Skills USA, we have Takara Morris. She is a Regional Two Officer, and she represents the Law Academy. Our culinary student tonight is from Donellen High School, Michaela Howell. She has earned her SERVSafe and her PROSTART certifications, which are industry certifications that the industry recognizes. Our FBLA, or Business Program, member tonight is Rachel Ray from North Marion High School. She holds her Photoshop and her InDesign certifications. From Lakewood High School, we have Catherine Dai. She's a junior, and she's in our Communication Technology Program with Mr. Natalino. Our Digital Video Production Program at Westport High School, we have Charlie Ramos. She's a junior, and she is also certified in Premier Pro. These are students that represent about 13,000, a little over 13,000 students in our district that take career and technical education. There's 12 different cluster areas that we have within our district that range from health occupations, agriculture, digital video productions, skills or your automotive, your construction type of programs, all different kinds of programs that these students represent. We earned, across the district, 714 industry certifications last year, which totaled 793 articulation credits, which were valued at $82,000 that those students elected to take those programs at the state college level. We did have middle schools that earned our Digital Tools Certification. 245 students earned Digital Tools Certification last year. Across our district in HOSA, we have 469 high school members, 166 middle school members. Skills, we have 266 members. FFA, we have 705 members across this district. And FBLA, we have 321s. Those are just our top memberships in our student organizations that represent our programs. I'm going to ask Tyler to come forward and lead you in an inspiration.
It's failure that gives you the proper perspective on success. Ellen DeGeneres. Good evening. I'm Tyler Chaffin, a senior at Bellevue High School and the Region 3 HOSA president. As a freshman, I entered my health occupations class for the first time with curiosity and awe. My teacher urged us all to join HOSA because it would help us pursue our goals in the health field while being in the program. Eager to be an involved student, I immediately joined and assumed a chapter officer position. Following that, I competed in my first competition ever, advancing to state conference. My eyes were opened to a whole new world. Thousands of student members flooded the conference center with hope as they networked, competed, and learned. As the conference ended and I found out that I lost my competition, I was devastated. However, I took that feeling of loss and applied it to help our chapter in the upcoming years. Working with others, we increased our membership, brought more awareness to the organization, and fundraised over $1,400 for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. That fundraising allowed us to earn state and national recognition for our partnership between our health program and the organization. This shows how career and technical student organizations and career and technical education programs go hand in hand. My journey in my health program is reflective of my journey in HOSA. In both, you learn about your career field, yourself, and others. You are able to see the ins and outs of what you are studying, but also see why people are so passionate about what they do. CTE has shown me that I can turn my failures into success and my defeat into triumph. It has made me learn, it has made me learn, to not be the best, but to be my best self. CTE and CTSOS have allowed me and many others to see how we can make a positive impact in not only our lives, but our future workforce. Thank you. And now, I would like to introduce Takara Morris, a Skills USA II Region Officer and a student in the Law Academy at Marion Technical Institute.
Good evening. Thank you, Tyler, for that wonderful introduction. If you don't mind, please stand with me and salute to our, to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Later in the agenda, you will find that there'll be reading a proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month, which is the month of February. Thank you for allowing us to bring these students forward. Do you guys have any questions for these students?
Board, do you have any questions or comments for the students? Ms. Stacy.
I was raised in an area in South Florida where the life you live in school with your agriculture and all the different things that everybody's involved in was huge. And so, I am proud of all of you. But I grew up in this world.
Guys, I just want to say, choose your career and go after it with all your gusto. You know, being in the vocational area, that will give you an opportunity to find a job all over the United States. So, whatever you do, do it with all your gusto and enjoy what you do.
And I would say, choose your careers, but stay in Marion County.
Go for it, guys.
I agree. Stay in Marion County. You guys are doing a wonderful job, and I liked how you said, be the best that you can be. And I think everyone standing up here is being their best. So, keep up the great work and stay in Marion County. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, Dr. Mayer.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the January 24th, 2017 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Okay, good. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So, move.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December 13th, 2016, 2017 School Board Meeting?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton and seconded by Mr. James. Were there any corrections or additions? All those in favor signify by stating aye. And the motion passed 5-0. Mrs. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, please come forward with a special recognition regarding the tag art program.
Thank you, Chairperson King and School Board Members, Superintendent, Dr. Mayer. Thank you again for allowing me to be here. Man, you guys know how to pack a house. Not only is the boardroom full, I know that those at home can't see it, but so is the hallway and the lobby. And the Public Education Foundation works each and every day connecting children, classrooms, and community. And tonight, I am proud and honored to be able to celebrate two events that have done just that. And we're going to start tonight with the kids' tag art, something that's been happening here in Marion County for several years now. George Albright, our local tax collector, actually brought this program to our county, and it has made a huge impact in our elementary school art programs. And so, without further ado, I will turn this over to Mr. Albright and Deputy Tax Collector, Steve Hall.
Steve, why don't you take 30 seconds and give them the history of it? Okay. For our newbies, this is our fifth year.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here again this year to present the kids' tag art program. In 2012, we started the kids' tag art program. We had seen it in Polk County, and they were very successful in that program. And we thought that it was a great idea to, to bring the program to Marion County to benefit the schools and their art programs. You know, Florida has 100-plus specialty plates that support worthy causes, and each, each cause gets a bit of the sales from those, from those plates. And we thought, why not do the same thing in the schools with having them design plates in the classrooms, and then the sales of those plates go back to the schools and the art program? The school earns 100% of the proceeds of that after printing costs. This year, the just-in scholar, or just-in sponsorship money was $13,874. We have some major sponsors every year. We can't do this without our sponsors. Our major sponsor was Jenkins Auto Group, again, for the fifth year, and they, they give us $10,000. Fine Arts Vocalla gives us $1,000 toward the program. The Florida Heart Research Institute gives us $1,500. And other scholarships were from Gateway Bank. They presented us with $250, $500 from Charroco Electric, and $500 from Duke Energy. We also have some in-kind sponsors that help us with the program, that being the Appleton, who graciously allow us to have our ceremony there for the awards at the end of the, the year. And they have done a great job with that in, in promoting the art also with this. We also have Woods Printing that does the tags themselves, and they do an awesome job with that. We have other counties coming to us, finding, wanting to find out who the printer is, because they have the program in their county as well. And the charities committee of our Tax Collector's Office, we also volunteer with that as well.
George, you want to...
That's, that's the basics on it.
Excuse me. The stars of the show are the kids and the teachers. So, I guess we should give the art teachers a hand, shouldn't we? They're actually here for the money, not the photo op. Right? Anyway, they've, they've, and I have to say this about them, they've been pushing every year, and sales have gone through the roof, and now, so we've, we, have we raised more on sales or...
Sales.
Than, than the, than the sponsors?
We have a few more sponsors this year, but sales have gone through the roof.
Yeah, so, so that was the two piece that we started with. I think we gave, what, $11,500 the first year?
About that, yes.
Yeah. And so, now, we're going to, what's the figure?
$27,400.
That's a big check.
That's a big check.
We want to thank you guys for, for coming after a long day and coming from all parts of the county to be involved in this, and it, they're the one constant. Every year, we get there, and these kids have been, as you all know, I've drawn out of the park, knocked it out of the park with hundreds of tags, and you're the common denominator that makes them keep knocking it out of the park every year. So, we, we salute you, and we're honored to be part of your programs.
Thank you.
Mr. Albright and Mr. Hall, before you walk away, on behalf of all of the students and teachers you've impacted, the Public Education Foundation just wants to say thank you...
Well, thank you.
...for your continued efforts. And we all know the difference that an art teacher and an art program can make in the life of a student. So, thank you for bringing this...
Thank you, guys. I want to, I want to thank the superintendent for coming and presenting all the awards on Saturday. And the first time we'd met, we had a great chat, and we're looking forward to great things from you.
Many thanks.
Thank you.
You all take care.
Thank you. Wait, before you leave, I think we have some board members that might want to speak. Ms. Stacy.
I would like to say thank you, George. It's just amazing, for someone who can't draw a straight line with a ruler. And I have to buy every single piece of art. I don't care if it's a picture frame or whatever, I have to have someone decorate it for me. And so, what you do for students, to give them the opportunity to blossom and just do things that people like, it's just so spectacular. You art teachers, it's just amazing, because, you know, I have, one of my, one of my children can, can, is really very artistic, and was at Madison Street, Joyce, and our kids went to get to school together. And the program that was at Madison Street with her really made such a big difference, and it was such a shame that this program wasn't everywhere. And now, thanks to the taxpayers and the referendum, we're able to bring art teachers into the schools to help people grow and be all they can be, like you did my daughter at Madison Street. Thank you all.
As much as proud as we are, I think the most, and you all, I guess you all can bear it out, where the rubber really hit the road was five years ago when you had no money. And every one of them got $438 that year. So, it, it ain't nothing but good, is it? All right, guys, see y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To add to that, we, we have, over the last five years, we have, the total has been $89,556.
Amazing.
That has been generated through the sponsorship and the sales of the plates for this program. So, it's been very well worthwhile. I'd like to also speak to something else that has impacted our program this year. We had a, we had an inquiry about a design of a plate on whether it was going to be copyrighted or not. And once I found out what the, the design was, there, there was no copyright, so there was no problem with the child, go ahead and, and do this. We were told that the child was in the hospital and was sick and was working on the program in the hospital. So, we, we, we said that, you know, it's fine, go ahead and do that. Well, let me tell you a little bit about, about what happened. Give you a little background. A retinol leukodystrophy, or ALD, is a deadly genetic disease that affects 1 in 18,000 people. It mostly affects boys and men. The brain disorder destroys the myelin or the protective sheath that surrounds the brain's neurons, the nerves that allow us to think and to control our muscles, and knows no racial, ethnic, or geographic barriers. The most devastating form of ALD appears in childhood, generally between the ages of four and 10 years old. Normal, healthy boys suddenly begin to regress. At first, they simply show behavioral problems, such as withdrawal or difficulty concentrating. Gradually, as the disease ravishes their brain, their symptoms grow worse, including blindness, deafness, seizures, loss of muscle control, and progressive dementia. This relentless downward spiral leads to either death or permanent disability, usually within two to five years of its diagnosis. Today, new scientific knowledge offers hope for a successful treatment of the prevention of ALD. But it's urgent that we invest in research that will advance new therapies as well as new tools for early diagnosis and educational campaigns to raise awareness, so that children with ALD can be identified as early as possible, while there's the best hope for beneficial treatment. The best treatments, if found, early, before onset of symptoms, are Lorenzo's Oil, stem cell transplants using bone marrow or umbilical cord blood. These treatments have also been shown to slow or stop the progression of the deterioration of the myelin. There currently is a fight to pass Aiden's Law, Senate Bill 2641 and House Representatives' Bill 4692, which would require ALD screenings to all 50 states. This procedure costs less than $2.50 per infant, and the price will go down if adopted by more states. We have no excuse not to pass this bill. Currently, only four states require newborn testing for ALD: New York, Connecticut, New Jersey, and California. Please help save our boys. Call on Congress to pass Aiden's Bill and require newborn ALD screening be done in all 50 states. In the two years that ALD screening in New York, 46 babies have been diagnosed with the disease. That's 46 lives saved. Three more states will begin newborn testing of ALD soon, but that leaves people in 46 states in the dark of this silent killer. We must fight for them, for their children. Screening of ALD requires a single drop of blood taken from the baby's heel at birth and costs less than a cup of coffee. Please urge Congress to do the right thing and pass Aiden's Law requiring newborn ALD screening in all 50 states. Now, you may ask, why? We, we chose to inform you on this. It's because we found out about this young man who was working on the kids' tag art program and had been diagnosed with ALD. When we held our judging for the awarded distinction winners in December, we saw one of the designs had a ribbon on it. So, we thought that this would be, you know, a ribbon for cancer awareness. We inquired and, back to the schools, and found out that this child was sick and told, told us that this was not his design, but we did find out what the design was. We found out sadly that this young man passed away November 24th, Thanksgiving Day. That student was Donnie Schuler, or DJ, from Bellevue Santos Elementary School. In doing some inquiring about Donnie and the disease that he had, we learned that not only did Donnie have ALD, but two of his cousins also had the disease. Tyron TJ passed away in September of 2016. Donnie passed away in November, and Tyree is still fighting the disease now. I talked with his art teacher, Joyce Gilfoyle, and asked about Donnie, and she relayed to me how Donnie had been a student in fourth grade and was looking forward to the kids' tag art program. Donnie never made it to the classroom, because he was in shans, receiving treatments. Ms. Gilfoyle took the template to Donnie so that he could participate like the other members of his class. She would also take her son and daughter to him to visit, and it seemed to brighten his spirits. So, on behalf of Mr. Albright and the Marion County Tax Collector's Office, we presented Donnie's mother Saturday with a special courage award for Donnie's fight that he fought so bravely. This is his plate and the award that we presented. We would like to bring his mother up. This is Rachel, and we want to do our part to raise awareness of ALD. And I know Rachel also wants that, as well as, as her sister, who currently is traveling to do some more awareness of, of the disease. But we would like to, to give you a face of this mother that has gone through this and ask you to please support ALD and trying to make sure that all 50 states test for this.
Just Google "save the boys," hashtag "save the boys," and there's a petition.
Can I ask a question? Would you repeat the House and Senate bill for me?
Yes, ma'am.
I've got the House bill, but the Senate bill, I didn't write fast enough.
Senate bill is 2641. If you go to several of the websites, StopALD.org, ALD Foundation, there also is a change.org where you can sign a petition that goes straight to Congress on that. They're real, they wanted 200,000 signatures, and they're this close.
18,000 shy.
18,000 shy.
When I first got diagnosed with my son, there was 8,000 signatures.
Okay, StopALD.org and ALD...
Foundation.org. Just Google ALD, and you will find all the information that you, you need to, to know about this disease.
Thank you.
Mr. Dan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a suggestion that we write a resolution supporting this as a board, if we can do that. And then, we can, in turn, also sign the petition, but as a board, we sent a resolution by the support of the Marion County School Board.
A great idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, they, you don't know, and you don't know, but I sent that, all this information to Senator Baxley and Representative McClain, and asked them to do this in Florida now.
Okay.
So, it's one thing to get an act of Congress, as we all know, and, but it's another to have Florida handle it. So, I sent to them last night about 10 o'clock. So, what maybe you could do is, could you have somebody email me, and I'll send you what Steve had, so that, for the resolution? Heidi has mine. And then, I'll get it to you, and then, if you'll say something about state and federal in there as well, and then, get it to me or send it to Baxley. And so, he can give that to Senate and House Healthcare Committee. So, let's see if we can get this added to mandated benefits on birth and Healthy Start Medicaid and private plans, and see if we can just knock it out here in one fell swoop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'd like to have you let our delegation know that, our, our state delegation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you. I, I ran into you in, in the rest, in the restroom, and I'm so glad that you're here today and that you brought this to our attention, because personally speaking, I had no idea, but now that I do know...
Same thing with us. We had no clue. We were carriers. We had nothing in our family ever, and there's boys, and it was just hit. A sister, two sons, and then, I got my boys tested. Oldest was negative, my youngest was not. So...
And do you want to tell them, I guess, if they screen positive, there's a, a triage in that can do, that they can actually slow it down or stop it?
Have you ever heard of Lorenzo's Oil?
I, I have.
The movie?
Yes.
That's based on ALD. If you're caught early, you can be on Lorenzo's Oil, which can halt, it's been proven to halt the disease. There's boys in, that get MRIs like every six months, and with the Lorenzo's Oil and the diet, the low-fat diet, they have been... Oil and the diet, the low-fat diet, they have been no changes on their MRIs.
Wow, nice.
So, that's the first treatment before bone marrow.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I don't think I've ever even heard of it before.
No.
Was this Beth White questioning here?
Yes.
She was here.
She didn't realize that.
Okay, all right. That was a good resolution.
Well, we needed to do something.
In honor of Student Services Week, February 6 through 10, 2017, Dr. Dama Abshire, Director of Alternative Programs, along with Ms. Liz Fields, Director of Exceptional Student Education, Mr. Juan Lopez, Director of Social Work and Psychological Services, and Mr. John McGowan, Director of School Counseling and Assessment, would like to share the programs and services provided by Student Services professionals.
Good evening, Superintendent, Madam Chair, and School Board Members. Thank you for having us here this evening. We'd like to share with you a few of the things that we do within Student Services as we get ready to recognize the different professionals that fall under the category of Student Services here in Marion County. So, in general, what are Student Services or what is our department about? We have four different categories of professions that fall under the umbrella of Student Services, and that's school counseling, school nursing, school psychology, and school social work. Also, in Marion County, within that umbrella, we include alternative programs, our exceptional student education department, and Section 504. Within our Student Services Department, really, it's our goal to provide comprehensive support services to students and parents to ensure that all students attend school, that they stay in school, and that they're engaged in learning. We've been introduced, so I will not reintroduce us, we'll come up one at a time and tell you who we are, but I'm Dama Abshire, and I oversee alternative programs. And many of you see me regularly with alternative placements and recommendations to you all for expulsion from school. There are some other things that I do within the Alternative Programs Department, so I listed a few of those things, and much of my work is around prevention, bullying prevention, helping our schools with their Tier One supports to students and teaching expectations, our positive alternative to school suspension, which is the PAST program that helps students when they're out of school suspended to have a safe place to go and get their work done. I also oversee the educational services for our students that are in Department of Juvenile Justice programs here in Marion County. We have four different programs: Marion Youth Academy, the Marion Regional Juvenile Detention Center, and then students that are in the adult jail and the juvenile barracks, part of the jail. I also serve as the liaison between our school system and our contracted alternative schools such as Silver River Mentoring and Instruction, New Leaf Center, Pace Center for Girls, and Catapult Academy. And then also, under the umbrella of alternative programs, is Health Services and Section 504. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Palacios to go over that.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kayla Palacios, and I'm the Program Specialist for Health Services in Section 504, and I just wanted to have an opportunity to talk to you about that a little bit tonight. So, for Health Services, we have a team of 19 registered nurses, five Health Services technicians, and three Health Services workers, and those employees are all employed through the Florida Department of Health. We contract through, with the Florida Department of Health for those services. School nurses, which are the registered nurses from the Florida Department of Health, they staff 10 Marion County schools. They are the school nurse in those buildings. And then we have six basic nurses who oversee the clinics for the remaining schools. They train and supervise the unlicensed assistive personnel in the 47 remaining schools, and those unlicensed assistive personnel are our health clinic assistants and their backups. And we have 50 health clinic assistants and 113 trained backups in those schools. And they support and implement the 2016 through 2018 School Health Services Plan that you all have approved. So, school health nurses supervise and monitor the school health program. They provide direct services to students and families through their schools, and they train and direct unlicensed assistive personnel. And health clinic assistants perform selected delegated tasks, including the administration of treatments and medications, and they're able to do that through the Florida School Health Administrative Guidelines, Florida Administrative Code, Florida statutes, and federal laws and guidelines as well. So, health services that are provided include nursing assessments. Our school nurses, the registered nurses, completed over 18,000 nursing assessments last year. They did over 1,600 child-specific trainings, which are trainings for our unlicensed assistive personnels regarding specific children and their specific health needs in those schools and classrooms. They also provide dental screenings and sealants, which is a new program this school year. They do immunizations through the Florida Department of Health, so that's our flu shot and our T-DAP clinics that we have throughout the year. They do developmental screenings for hearing, vision, scoliosis, and growth and development. They do health counseling, referral and follow-up for suspected or confirmed health problems, so that's through those health screenings. They do referrals, and they do follow-up if they have a student who has some type of an issue or an unconfirmed issue in those areas. And they give first aid and emergency health services, so we did over 91,000 first aid administrations last year between health clinic assistants and school nurses and administered over 113,000 medications last year. They develop healthcare procedures for students with chronic or acute health conditions. Almost 1,600 individual healthcare plans that are specific to students were written last year, and they also promote healthy behaviors. So, I also work with Section 504. So, Section 504 is from the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and it basically says that students with disabilities cannot be discriminated against by organizations that receive federal funding. So, in order to be eligible as a student with a disability that is protected under Section 504, they must have, the student must have a mental or physical impairment that substantially limits a major life activity. And if they are eligible under Section 504, they are protected from discrimination. There are procedural safeguards in place for those students, and it levels the playing field for those students with disabilities. For example, if you had a student who has severe asthma, for example, they would have the impairment of asthma that substantially limits the major life activity of breathing. So, we would create a plan for that student to help them access the educational environment and have an equally safe environment as other students. So, that might include medication administration, that might include modified physical education activities and things like that, and those are all decided by a committee that is led by the Section 504 designee, and every school has a 504 designee.
Hello, good evening. I'm going to talk about the Exceptional Student Education Department. Of course, we have our exceptional student education teachers. We have 6,632 students with disabilities, and we also have 2,446 students that are gifted. So, our umbrella covers both ends here, and those gifted students are working towards meeting personal goals and working on the gifted framework. I think the people that sometimes we forget about that we want to acknowledge are the speech-language pathologists. We have 66 of them that serve 3,300 students. We have 25 occupational therapists that serve 560 students, 15 physical therapists with 280 students, and then we have educational interpreters that service our deaf and hard-of-hearing students. And then these are other department staff, so managers, program specialists, our resource compliance specialists, behavior analysts and specialists. All of these people are in the department providing services to our students. So, I'll turn it over to school counselors.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Members. I've had the opportunity to present to you information with our school counselors before, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so again. Who are our school counselors? We have 104 dedicated instructional employees at all levels of our district, K-12. They are an instructional unit. They are hired by their school-based principal, which makes it a little bit unique among the other student services departments. Another thing that's unique is although an instructional employee, they are required to have a master's degree in school counseling, so they're specifically trained, and have the state certification in school counseling as well. Who do school counselors serve? Students, parents, and teachers, and they serve a vital role in their school's leadership team, and they are the conduit with community and other school district staff to help students get the services that they need. School counselor services, everything ranging from individual and group counseling, crisis intervention, to academic and career planning. They help with their school administration to do staff trainings. They're the, a lot of them are 504 contacts at their school. In general, as you all know, the school counselors can be that link from pre-K kindergarten enrollment through calling that student's name out at graduation when they hand them their diploma. So, they can be a link, K-12 for our students. Specific areas of service, they meet the needs of students through the delivery of the Marion County Conference of Guidance Plan. It covers academic, career, social, personal, and multicultural global citizenship standards, and they are the liaison between all stakeholders to make sure students receive what they need, whether that be through services we provide in our district or through referrals. And what kind of they receive, our office, School Counseling and Assessment at the district level provides training through monthly meetings and services, online webinars, et cetera, and a district contact to support our school counselors throughout the school year. Thank you.
Good evening. Someone described Student Services as the underground testing, and I think it was very aptly described because we are the one that take care of all the hiccups that goes on so the show of learning and teaching can go on in your schools. I happen to represent, and I can say this without hesitation, you know, one of the finest group of professionals that we have in our school system, just my colleagues from Student Services, but also the specific groups that I happen to represent, which is psychological and social work services. Now, who are the School Psychological Services? These are a very unique team of professionals that are all specialists or doctoral-level professionals that are, we have also three master-level diagnostician that helps with the diagnosis and evaluation of children, and we provide services not just to the school system, to teachers, but also to families and provide consultation. Who are we? We are uniquely qualified members of our school team, and we say uniquely qualified because the school psychologists have to have very specialized training. We've been described as the psychologists that know the most about education and the educators that know the most about psychology. So, we are kind of a hybrid of those two professions, and we bring our knowledge to make sure that our kids actually are able to perform to optimal success. We serve, as I indicated before, not only to educators and to kids directly, but also to parents. We provide consultation. We're always available to help families, especially around diagnosis and about, you know, around determining what type of problems the kids are presenting and presenting solution to address those problems. Some of the services we provide is not just about learning. We all know that learning involves not just being exposed to the academic environment, but also be emotionally able, motivated, and emotionally stable in order to be able to access that education. So, we work closely trying to make sure that the kids are in optimum condition emotionally and physically so they can access the education we provide. And that involves many times intervening with mental health issues, diagnosis, and other types of mental health intervention. Our focus is always improve academic achievement. We want to really improve family and school partnership, and we have a wide variety of roles that we play as part of a team in Student Services that allows this team to magnify their impact in teaching and learning. This is the kind of training where, like I said, we are really a very rare hybrid. We know a lot about assessment, and we are responsible for doing the evaluation for special education eligibility. So, we are the one responsible for determining what type of program the kids will go to. We conduct in-depth assessment in terms of social, emotional functioning, and also neurological and learning performance of the kids in the classroom and also at home. We can provide counseling to students and to parents when they have problems that they're facing with the kids at home too, also. We have a team of 18 qualified professionals, and you'll say, well, 18 qualified professionals, this doesn't sound like a lot of them, but we know, we make do. Quite frankly, you know, we work with, provide services, you know, based on referrals, and we're always available to provide consultation to teachers, parents, and professionals in our school system. One of the things that we, I think one of the things that typically is not indicated is that we work very closely with school to create a positive school climate because we believe that creating an accepting, supportive environment is key for the kids to be able to perform optimally academically. It's not just about providing good curriculum, but it's also about providing a safe, supportive environment that contribute to the development of emotional abilities of a student. And that's it. Now, you have an idea why we are called the underground testing, because we do so many things, and they are always below the surface. So, it's a real pleasure to represent such a group of fine professionals in our school district. Thank you.
Dr. Jonathan Grantham, Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. We'd like to introduce new consultants who will be helping with our low-performing schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, Ms. Lake, and Brenda, I got everything in on time, so you smile, we're good. It brings me great honor. First, it's been a super night, a lot of good things happening, and there's some more good things to come. I want to introduce to you our, some three consultants. They, I asked them to send me a resume, but some of their resumes are longer than my entire dissertation was. I'm kidding. They come with great recommendation and great accolades. I'm going to just ask each one to come and then address the board. They're coming to help us. They're in our schools daily. They're talking to principals and APs and deans and teachers, and they're paying attention to reading and instruction and things such as that. So, I want to first ask Ms. Riordan if she'll come. Judy, will you please come? Judy comes to us from Orange County. She was a, I'm not going to say the year, Judy, I'm just going to say, she's been doing this for a little bit. She was a teacher and reading specialist at Dover Shores Elementary. She was a curriculum resource specialist at Howard Middle School, a curriculum resource specialist at Evans High School, an assistant principal for instructions at Evans High School, and a senior administrator of curriculum at the West Learning Community, which is an area job in Orange County. Judy, will you please address the board?
Thank you. Good evening to you all. And as I was sitting back there, and the gentleman who was talking about guidance referred to themselves as being the underground, I'm part of the three musketeers who we are very humbled and honored to have been allowed to come and assist you in trying to make all of your students be as successful as possible. So, from that way, I'd like to assure you that we come with a helping hand, a full heart. Hopefully, we will come with some answers that you haven't heard before, and I'd like to quote Mr. James, if you don't mind. Even though we are in the older group, we too do it with gusto. Thank you.
Our next gentleman that's helping us in our secondary schools is Dr. Daniel Buckman. Dr. Buckman, he is currently in, working for National Lewis. He has been with Orange County for over 30 years. He was a biology teacher at Evans High School, an assistant principal at Dr. Phillips and West Orange High Schools. He was the principal of Evans, Boone, and West Orange High Schools, as well as an associate superintendent for governmental relations. Dr. Buckman.
I think Ms. Riordan said it beautifully. We're here to assist in student success. We bring a fresh set of eyes, an open heart, and we're going into the schools. I've been so well-received to see what we can do to assist to make that happen. I thank you, Superintendent, for the opportunity, and anything that we can do, we just reach out and support you any way we can, make a difference. Thank you so much.
And our final young lady that's helping us in elementary schools is Dr. Rosita Riley. Dr. Riley was an acting area superintendent, an area superintendent in the West Learning Community, an area superintendent in the East Learning Community, an area superintendent in the West Learning Community, again, in Orange County schools. Dr. Riley.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent. It is indeed a pleasure to be here in Marion County. It's a beautiful drive from the Winter Garden, Orlando area, and we are so excited to have the pleasure and the opportunity to work in your schools, to work with your teachers and your school leadership team, to make sure that we can do whatever we can to get that. and your school leadership team to make sure that we can do whatever we can to get that school grade and district grade up to an A, because we know how important data is, we know how important student achievement is, reading, all of the content areas, and collectively, the three of us, would you believe it, have over 100 years of experience. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, any questions, or would you allow to ask anything, or speak to any one of these individually?
I would like to ask you, were you involved in the parent program, the Title I program that the school board member in Orange County started that was real big, where they have the parents that come to a high school like quarterly in Orange County? You just look so familiar.
There is a strong possibility. I retired from Orange County in 2011, and I've worked with all of the previous school board members, and if, Cat Gordon was one of the school board members involved with that, and I believe there was also another administrator, Dr. Joy Taylor, involved with that as well.
And the Title Department.
Yes, ma'am.
Joy was there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because that, somehow I'm just associating you, because I've been to some of those parent things that, your face just looks familiar, but yes, Cat Gordon and
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Joy, that's Dr. Joy. I've spoken to them both. Thank you.
I know you expected me to say something to you.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to welcome you to Marion County. We have talked so many times about you coming to Marion County to work with you, and when I talked with Dr. Grantham, and he said that you were a part of the team, I was very pleased.
Thank you.
I know that he's, he indicated some things that he talked to you about me, but a little bit later on, I'll talk to you about some things about him.
Yes, sir. I have listening ears.
Okay. Welcome aboard. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Grantham. Mrs. Chris Sandy, Principal on Assignment with Curriculum and Instruction, is here to provide an update on the countdown to Florida State assessments and the data schools are using to determine student success.
You, good evening, Board. You heard our consultants talk about the school grades and also about our district grade. That is indeed correct. I could show you here that I have a countdown started. I have a date, I know that exactly, I bet you were aware, so I'll just test you. Do you know in 23 days, the students in Marion County will be taking the first leg of the FSA assessment, the writing piece? I bet you're also aware that in 31 days, school days, that our third graders will be taking their third grade FSA assessment toward reading. I bet you also knew that in 44 days, see, I have this all, I check it off every day, you would also know that in 44 days, we'll be taking our reading and math across the district, and then the first of May, or in 66 days, we'll be taking our science assessment. We are very well aware at the district, at schools, and even students are aware of what the challenge is ahead of them. Did you also realize, however, that the countdown toward the FSA assessment really has already begun? On Friday, we will open up our Survey 3, which is over the next 11 days, we will look at attendance, and on the date certain, which is February 10th, we will send a file to the DOE that shows the DOE which schools our students were in attendance. But, that had already begun back in October, because remember, they have to have a matching file. So, we already sent Survey 2 dated to them. So, once they get Survey 2 and Survey 3 data, they will know the students that were in Marion County for both survey periods, and those will be the students that they use to determine our school, our district grade. Schools will also know the students that were in both attendance periods, which will be used for the school grades at each individual school site. So, attendance is important during the next, well, beginning on Friday, for the next 11 days, so that we capture all the students, so that we can show off to everyone what an outstanding job we are doing in educating our children. Now, we are very well aware of the challenge that we have, and so we are looking constantly at our data. In fact, this afternoon, I was at a school where we were doing a data dig on that analysis and working with the faculty, so that they could lay out what they are going to do over the next number of weeks to show off everything that the students know. This is going on all over the district. Principals are very well aware and are working hard to work with their faculties and staff using the data that is available, and we do have data. For example, you have supported our iReady program. We are finishing up iReady this week. You can be rest assured, we'll be all over the iReady data, seeing what we can do to make it happen. We also have our learning checks in place that we, our principals are working with. We will have in our science district benchmark that's available at our schools. And so, our schools are utilizing the resources that you have provided them to make educational decisions for the children, so that on, for example, in third grade, on the 31st day from now, those kids will be well-prepared, because we certainly don't want those children to be at the retained level. We want them all to be at levels three, four, and five. So, we are utilizing the resources that you have provided them, the staff development that we have provided our teachers, to see what a difference we can make to bring our school grades to the level that you want and the level I want. So, hopefully, you are sensing that there is urgency within our school community to make a difference. And if 23 days from now doesn't make you nervous, it does me, and certainly can get my blood pressure raised, as I know that we're working hard at trying to make a difference in the lives of children. Any questions? I will be glad to send you my continued countdown if you feel the need for pressure. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we now have iReady at all the elementary schools?
No, ma'am, we do not. We have put it with our schools that have been identified as some of our more struggling schools. And so, we are utilizing, some have reading, some have reading and math, and we are utilizing that as a resource, because it is aligned to the Florida sunshine, or the Florida standards, and so we want to make sure that the resources that we have are being utilized, and we
We can expand it if it, if we really see it really, really help. We can, we can move it into the other schools?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, we are utilizing iReady as the foundation of a third grade program that we are putting in place at our schools, at some of our schools, to see what we can do about raising the achievement levels of some of our third grade retainees, as well as those kids that are at the bubble level. So, not only are we using it across the board, but we're targeting it specifically at a curriculum design that we've put in place in Marion County.
Right, thank you.
Yes, it is great. Thank you.
Ms. Sandy, I also want to state that I love that you used the word urgency.
Yes, ma'am. I have a sense of urgency, and the school I left to send this afternoon also had a sense of urgency, and every school that I have been working with also has that same sense of urgency, because it really is all about the children, and we really want every child to succeed, and therefore, and they have teachers, and we want them to succeed, and they have schools, and we want them to succeed, and they have parents, and they want, everyone wants it. So, what we're trying to do across the district is to give them the knowledge, the tools, and the resources that they need to make that happen for each and every child in our district.
Perfect.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation proclaiming the month of February as Black History Month?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, along with Ms. Narvella Haynes from Howard Middle School, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
See Ms. Haynes here this evening.
Okay. How Ms. Ellis fill in for?
Boston Ellis. It always, it always pays to look, to look nice, absolutely. This proclamation reads, "Whereas Black History Month shares the historical and present contributions of African-Americans, whereas Black History Month began as Negro History Week in February 1926 in the United States as a supplement to the school curriculum through the work of African-American scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson. His aim was to encourage a greater awareness and understanding of the African experience and contributions in America, Africa, and throughout the world. Whereas later in the 1960s, the week expanded into Black History Month to commemorate a more balanced and accurate picture of Black history, and is celebrated during the entire month of February, as it coincides with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. Whereas throughout Black History Month, we celebrate the many contributions African-Americans have made to our nation, and we are reminded of their courage and struggle to change the hearts and minds of our citizens. While much progress has been made, we must continue to work together to achieve the promise and vision of our great nation. And whereas the School Board of Marion County, recognizing its own diversity and that of its employed workforce and entire student body, will continue to honor Black History Month to enhance equity and diversity, now therefore, the School Board of Marion County, Florida proclaims February as Black History Month, and it's dated the 24th day of January and signed by each of you." So, Ms. Boston Ellis, on behalf of the board and the superintendent, I'll hand this over to you, and be careful with that hand.
Okay.
Don't squeeze too hard.
I'd just like to accept this on behalf of Black History Month. I think I stated last year when I was asked to accept it, that history is important. It's important for us to evaluate where we've come from, where we are now, and where we need to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Were there any comments from the board, or just move on? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation proclaiming the month of February to be Career and Technical Education Month?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. Mr. Christian and Mr. Mark Bianello, Executive Director on Assignment, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
This is when I wish I had a block to stand on. Let me read this as well. This proclamation reads, "Whereas February 21st through 28th, I'm sorry, February 1st through 28th, 2017, is designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. Whereas Career and Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. Whereas students in Career and Technical Education Programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase student engagement and achievement. Whereas Career and Technical Education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework, as well as pursuit of established programs of study and career pathways. Whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, agribusiness, public service, energy, advanced manufacturing, and information technology. Whereas Career and Technical Education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study, linking secondary and post-secondary education, and leading to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials, which we heard about earlier this evening. And whereas ensuring that employers have access to a qualified workforce is a crucial step to ensure productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continued American economic growth and global competitiveness, now therefore, be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida proclaims the month of February to be Career and Technical Education Month, and urges all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the Career and Technical Education Programs in this community, and to support, participate in, and encourage the further development of these programs to enhance student engagement and learning, further student educational pursuits, and prepare students for productive living. So, Mr. Bianello, on behalf of the board and the superintendent."
Thank you, Mr. Christian, and thank you, Board. Dr. Mayor, good evening, and Mrs. King, Board Chair, Board Members. I, I woke up this morning early, around 5:00, and, and I started smiling then, and I'm, I'm still smiling straight into the, the evening here. Today was a big day for us. It was a big day for the district. It was a big day for the Career and Technical Education Programs. We, we launched our, our vision of, of where as a district we are, are taking our career programs. Ms. McCall was there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Ms. Anetti to, to come up here, because we're gonna get into an event that really signifies at the foundation what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. So, as, as we build our, our future programs here, it all starts with a, a, what we're calling a historic link between the educational community and our business community. We're there to support business, business is there to support education, and in between, where our worlds collide, we're gonna have outcomes produced in Marion County as never seen before. That, that's what we believe. So, a, a good example of this is the Career Expo. Now, this started, the idea behind Career, the Career Expo started with Engage in Education a few years ago. This is the second annual Career Expo. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Anetti to say a few things about it here in just a moment, but let me read some statistics. January 12th, we did this out at the Circle Square Cultural Center on top of the world. Over 418 of our middle school students participated, and you're gonna see a video here in a moment. They were well-dressed, very professional, wonderful representation of our, our school districts. We had over 120 volunteers participate in this event. 21 employers were there to present and, and work and connect with our students. Five colleges and all of our eight high schools were there. So, when we talk about a partnership, this exemplifies the type of thing that we're talking about, which is good for the community.
And we're here this evening because we want to not only talk about the middle school youth career expo that has already taken place, but invite you all to come back to Circle Square Cultural Center, February 2nd, for the high school version of Youth Career Expo, where our students learn not only about local businesses and, that are hiring and what they need here in Marion County, what they can do career tech-wise to achieve their goals.
Recently, the Circle Square Cultural Center
They learn soft skills and so much more. And we're gonna watch a few minutes of the video of our middle school youth career expo, and then Mr. Bianello and I are going to introduce you to some incredible community partners that made this possible for our students.
Recently, the Circle Square Cultural Center played host to the second annual Youth Career Expo, and there is only one word to describe what took place. Fun! Middle school students from across the county were invited to engage with local industry leaders and glean some firsthand insight into the different career paths available to them.
Well, today we've learned a lot about all these careers, and the other room, we talked to actual people who are in certain careers. It was nice to like, know what they do, and they've talked about how long it took, their salaries and all that. So, yeah, it's really helpful to learn, especially from them, their point of view.
The expo is a collaborative effort between several organizations, including Marion County Public Schools and the Public Education Foundation. The turnout for this year's expo was outstanding, and students came away from the event with not only more information, such as what careers and industries are in demand, but perhaps even a glimpse into their own futures.
In 10 years, I want to see myself, I'd probably be in college. If not college, then I'd rather be a sportscaster, somewhere in the broadcasting and journalism field. Like, this is really helpful. I mean, this is something that they should just keep doing and doing for many years. So, I, yeah, I really like it.
And this incredible Youth Career Expo Committee, you're going to meet most of those in a few minutes, had this marvelous idea of bringing this to our middle school students, so that the students that attended can now look at their career technical path as they go through their high school career, to see where they would like to end up. How can they achieve their goals starting now, instead of waiting until they graduate from high school? So, it was very exciting to have over 400 middle school students in attendance. Mr. Bianello, would you like to do the introductions?
I absolutely will, and, and it's time to celebrate our, our partnership here. So, as I call your name, please come on up, and we will hand you
Kevin, would you like to circle around here?
Absolutely. You'll get a certificate, and, and we'll get a photo opportunity here. So, from the Chamber and Economic Partnership, we have Mr. Kevin Shealy and Mrs. Felicia Judge. Please come on up. From Career Source, we have Kathleen Woodring and Brenda From Career Source, we have Kathleen Woodring and Brenda Christman. Please come on up. From the Marion Regional Manufacturing Association, we have Mr. Rob Adamac. From our very own Career and Technical CTE Program, we have Sarah Lefiles. Sarah, where are you? There you are, Sarah. Come on up, please. And from, it takes a true partnership here. So from our Transportation Department, we had to get our students there, Mrs. Rebecca Aurora. Please come on up, Mrs. Aurora, and thank you. And from our Food Services, we fed all these students as well. So Mrs. Susan Johnson, please come on up. So this team you see here represents many other people, but this was the partnership that is helping our students in our partnership that will hopefully help keep our students engaged here in Marion County, looking for jobs available here in Marion County here in the short future. So how about a round of applause for. And as Ms. Zanetti said, we hope to see everyone back at the Cultural Center on February 2nd where we do this again with our high schools. Thank you all.
Before you guys leave, we have a board member that would like to address you.
I am so excited. This, it was part of my platform and to be able to really, I want relevance, relevancy put right up on that wall back there because I think that's the word we're gonna hear. We're going to be able to change lives, change our kids' lives, and we'll be able to have a good workforce to choose from. So thank you for your commitment. I love, as Mrs. Zanetti said this morning, the silos are coming down and I think it's fabulous. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Florida's Sunshine Law, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and school district matters. The written summary of these procedures is also available from the table near the door to this room. Public speaker forms are also located on the table. They were due to the School Board's Assistant no later than 5:40 p.m. Madam Chair will call tonight's speakers prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt. Based on time considerations, the School Board by a majority vote can decide to limit the number of presentations, shorten those times, move public time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate public comment time for this meeting altogether. For speakers tonight, please state your full name and address and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. You may not yield that time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees must always conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks, slander, and profanity are strictly prohibited. Unsolicited commercial solicitations are also prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. Keep in mind for future meetings that speakers are welcome to use handouts or AV presentation, but only if they're provided at least 48 hours before the meeting. They must also have a total time of five minutes or less. For student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for attention to these remarks and I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Buckheder.
Joye Rumens.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you with a concern I have and I would also like to thank you all for the seriousness of the responsibility you've taken on being up there in those seats. I appreciate it. I come before you today to make the same request that I made here 35 years ago. Same Board, new members, and that is, I ask you to please follow suit with Orange and Flagler Counties who have recently made daily recess for all elementary students in their county mandatory. I will read, for expedience sake, my five minutes, my reasons for this request in a presentation I call "The Value of Play." Brad Rogers' recent article in the Star Banner, "Time to Play, Time to Learn," prompted this action that I dropped 35 years ago when I got nowhere with it and I am hoping to find a more compassionate Board. My reasons for asking for recess for elementary students. One, the need of children to have the time to form bonds of friendship with the other 25 students that they are with every weekday for nine months. These children are under much more pressure than previous generations with all the testing required, learning more difficult lessons at a younger age, algebra in the second grade. They need recess even more than I did as a child. They need to relax mentally from brain work. They need an opportunity for natural-born leaders to show themselves on the playground. PE is not a suitable substitute for a true recess, playground recess, because it is a graded class. They are told what to do, where to stand, how many laps to do, leaders are picked. It is not a freedom from work. It is a graded class. For an only child or children bust in from rural areas where neighbors are far and few between, recess is their only chance to play and socialize with other children. Since first grade and on, most students have homework every day, taking up about an hour of home time. Would you like to have to take an hour's worth of work at home every day that you're not getting paid for? Though I know what you're doing up there, you're already doing work. Most adults with a job get, count on, and look forward to their two 15-minute coffee breaks. That's their recess. Try taking that away from them, making them work all day long. Allowing individual teachers the option of giving students a recess is unfair as some will and some won't. So a mandatory recess policy is the only way to guarantee that all Marion County elementary students get the break they need. Young children need face-to-face socialization, not texting, not computer, not Facebook, all that. I don't know about that because I don't have any. All work and no play is not good for any human being, especially children. They learn things about themselves and each other on the playground, things you don't find in a book, as Brad pointed out. They learn compassion, helpfulness, dealing with emotions, connecting with others. I'd like you to please possibly research the reasons why Orange County and Flagler County have made it mandatory. I came here 35 years ago with petitions for recess, signed by hundreds of parents, because at Oak Crest, my children not only didn't get recess time, though the class next door did because it was a teacher's option, they also suffered through daily silent lunches. I did win them the right to talk at lunch, but not the recess they needed. I am here to ask you to have compassion for our hard-working students and make sure that they all get the break from the work they need. These are not child labor camps, they're schools. I'd also like to read from you, the same day I wrote all this down after reading Brad's column. I opened my Reader's Digest to the quotable quotes, it's one of my favorites, and a gentleman by the name of Stuart Brown, he is a psychiatrist and he runs the National Institute of Play. His quote in the quotable quotes was, "A lack of play should be treated like malnutrition. It's a health risk to body and mind." I watched his video on the internet. He stated that we have lost something in our culture, play. Even animals play. Severe play deprivation can lead to a deep suppression of emotions. Play brings joy, it leads to problem-solving. If you want to belong, you need social play. He claimed that nothing lights up the brain as far as whatever they stick on your head like play. The opposite of life without play isn't work, it's depression. Play can act as a powerful deterrent, even an antidote to prevent violence. It's a powerful catalyst for positive socialization. It helps brain growth, reduce stress, communication skills, social skills, creativity, and problem-solving. Freud was asked, "What is it to be a human being?" He answered with three words, "To love, to work, and to play." That is what a rounded-out life is. You can't have all play, you can't have all work, I know workaholics. You need play. And our children need to get to know each other better. This man claims that it will help prevent the type of children killing other children on playgrounds. They never made connections.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Do I, I would like to ask one question. To further this matter along, do I need to get a petition signed and if I do, how many signatures are required?
Without, I was gonna say, are you familiar with Dr. Grantham, our new Deputy Superintendent?
No, I'm not.
I think he's gonna take some time to speak to you about.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Whoops, sorry about that.
Mr. Gorham Black?
I don't think I'm first, but I think Peggy is first.
You want Peggy to be first? Okay, Margaret Hostetler?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. It's a privilege to be here. My name is Margaret Hostetler, Peggy Hostetler. My address is 21570 Northeast 151st Place, Salt Springs. And I'm Vice President of the Bridges Project. If you're familiar with the Bridges Project, it is a group of individuals wanting to better race relations in Marion County and Ocala. And we have a couple projects underway right now and I wanted to share with you one of them. And one of them is bringing to the children and the youth of Marion County the March Trilogy. Three books written by Congressman John Lewis, who was a civil rights hero back in the 60s and has been a congressman all these years in Atlanta, representing Atlanta. The three books that he has written are books to appeal to the young people. They are graphic novels, they're comic books, and they tell the story of civil rights movement. Book one talks about how he was in the sit-ins in Nashville and opened the lunchrooms. Book two talks about the Freedom Riders and the March on Washington. Book three talks especially about the March Across the Bridge for Voters' Rights, Montgomery to, Thelma to Montgomery, yes. So what we have done is we're not asking for money from the School Board to buy these books for the classrooms and the libraries. We are putting forth a grassroots event across the county in every way that we can think of, inviting people to give $30 for a set of the books. And what we're wanting to do is to present these books to the schools to be used in the libraries and the classrooms, coming up with something that makes it appealing to the kids, for them to find out that it even exists and for them to be asking for it. What we have, I did not do this 48 hours ahead, I didn't know I needed to do that. May I hand these out or set them on the table for you?
For the Board?
For the Board, did you see?
Oh yes, you can hand them to Mr. Lake and he'll get them to us.
Great, okay. This is what we are giving to folks and all the different events that we can think of. So that they have the opportunity to do their part, to educate our young people about the civil rights movement and encourage them that today is a day they can become heroes in their own right in bringing a change in nonviolent ways to our world. And so, two more people will be speaking. I know I'm not taking my whole time here, but each of us have time to speak and each will speak separately about their perspective on what we're doing, the Bridges Project, the March Trilogy. If you have any questions for me before I sit down, take your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gorham Black?
Dr. Mayor, Madam, oh Lord, I'll stand back. Dr. Mayor, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Colonel Retard Gorham Black. I am now a member of the community called Ocala. I moved down here from Maryland where I was the commander of the United States Army at Fort Meade, Maryland for three years. That's where NSA is. I used to be a lot taller and no gray hair. I want to talk to you about the march because I'm a graduate of Howard University. I graduated from there in 1963. I was involved in a lot of the civil rights things going on in our nation's capital of Washington, DC. My sophomore year, my next-door roommate was a gentleman named Stokely Carmichael. And I got to get involved with Dr. King and I'm gonna talk about that on the 26th of February at the Countryside Presbyterian Church. They have allowed me to give a Black History Month presentation. And I will talk about the summer I spent working with Dr. King. We were there to integrate Woolworth's department store lunch counters, 1962. I couldn't go there and get a hamburger. I couldn't even go there and eat, yet and still I was a member of a great, great university called Howard University located in Washington, DC. Like many of us, when we're grandparents, as I now am, I have teenage grandchildren. And I was stuck and I told my wife, "What in the world do we do for Daniel for his birthday?" Well, I bought him the books. I bought him the trilogy and I sent it to him for his 13th birthday. And he read each one of them and had to report back to me what he had learned out of each one. I still have my military hat on, if you don't like it, even the books. And he did. And my daughter is the president of the South Chicago Democratic Party. And John Lewis came to Chicago and he got his book signed by John Lewis. I'm gonna give the same book to the rest of my grandchildren on their birthdays as they turn 13. And I think they need to know because my daughters, both of them, were one and three years old when Dr. King died. My grandchildren know nothing about civil rights. They know nothing about the struggle. They know nothing about Dr. King except what they've learned and my youngest just gave a poem on WVON radio the other day about Dr. King. So what we hope that you can do is what I've had to grow up through. Let the children here in Marion County have these books so they can start to learn that there was a struggle that went on here in the United States, that there were changes made. All changes have not been made and they need to be part of that change. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Francine Julius Edwards?
Hello, Superintendent and Board. I am also part of the Bridges Project. I've also been a parent advocate at Lakewood High School for over six years. And it has been my struggle to understand that there has not been enough made for history understanding all of the struggles with civil rights, with black history. I am very happy to see that we have a proclamation and there is some sort of history that is being taught. I really feel that this March Trilogy will help to inspire our next community and social justice pioneer. That's what we really want, to be able to bring these different books to the middle and the high schools and community center reading rooms so that we can begin to educate our kids into understanding and taking what we do every day as community activists and getting them to understand and own being in the community here in Marion County. So I really hope that you will work with us and see that that happens. Thank you.
Julia Melanie Slaughter?
Julia Melanie Slaughter, 4525 Southeast 12th Avenue, Ocala, Florida, 34480. I am a parent of four children in the Marion County schools. I graduated from the Marion County schools. I'm an attorney here in town and I'm here to talk about the magnet program. My children attend Dr. Renee Jones and Howard Middle School and I understand from a letter that we recently received that there's gonna be some significant changes made to the magnet program. I am here- I am here to advocate to try to keep Dr. Nace Jones, my children's school, and Howard Middle School, schools that require some type of academic screening in order to have children accepted to it. And here's why I'm suggesting that that's appropriate. My, my children attended a school where basically half of the screening was academic and half of it was behavior. And the reason why that is so important is because it's hard for teachers to teach when children don't behave in school. And my children didn't have to deal with any of those types of concerns until, obviously, my son went to Howard. And at Howard, it is a program, it's not a magnet school. So half of the kids basically are in the magnet program, half of them are not. He didn't see a fight until he went to Howard. He didn't hear any profanity until he went to Howard. Now, that is a product of middle school, but it's also a product of children that are not in a situation where their parents are vested in them, invested in their education. Having grown up here, the biggest struggle you're gonna have in turning these schools around, quite frankly, is not you, and it's not your principals, and it's not your teachers, it is your parents. Because the people that I grew up with here care about football, and basketball, and baseball, because all their kids are gonna play in the pros one day. And they don't think about their education like they do that. They will go out and take their children to baseball practice. You know how many people I tried to get to go to the magnet fair? Sorry, my son's got a baseball practice, my son's got a soccer practice. My son can't miss practice to go to a magnet fair, to look at what his options are with all these great magnet schools that you're trying to start. And so, we need to try to educate parents, and the parents at my school are vested in their children's education. They think it is the most important thing. And I don't want that school to be separated from where it is, and the teachers that are vested in my children taken away from that school because we're trying to do things with other schools. And I'm not saying that other schools don't deserve it, because they absolutely do. But the grants that you're applying for have a lot of strings to them. West Palm Beach, they got a grant from the organization you're applying for your grant for, had to bus their children all over the county. They had to pay for that as part of the grant. Half the money they got from the grant went to busing, went to busing children that got into these different magnet schools. Our county is the size of Rhode Island. It's a huge county. And you've gotta think about, if you're gonna take a grant and spend half the money, which is what West Palm did, I researched it all, and spent half the money on busing, who's gonna pay for it when the grant runs out in five years? I mean, we have a hard enough time paying for teachers and other things. So I, I'm just asking the Board to consider, as important as I think magnet schools are, and as great as my children have benefited from magnet schools, because they absolutely have, they've gotten a better education from these magnet schools than any private school I could pay for. I couldn't buy them the education they got. But I don't want that to change. I don't want other children that are coming in through the school system, that I tell them how great these schools are, to not have the opportunity to do that. And I think if you look in the research, a third of the magnet schools in Florida are academically screened. A third of them are a random lottery, and a third of them are first come, first served. So there's all different kinds of ways that you can get into a magnet school, and you can do that. I would just request the Board, before you make these types of dramatic changes and try to change an entire program that has resulted in Madison Street and Jones being the top five schools in the, in the top five elementary schools in the state for years. And we got number one by USA Today in the entire country. Before you try to change that, I would ask you to consider what my grandfather always said, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." So I would just suggest and appreciate a little consideration for our school, our teachers, our principals, vice principal, and everybody that's done such a wonderful job at my school, to provide a great education for every child that goes there. Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers? That's it, that's it. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, C-10.1 through C-17.1, including the revised personnel list under item C-13.1?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, and seconded by Ms. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the 2014 through 15 school audit for Anthony Elementary School?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, and seconded by Ms. McCall. And Dr. Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. King. We need to recognize the person responsible for this excellent audit, as well as the one for 2015-16. And to enhance the significance of the outcome of this audit, I would like Ms. Boston Ellis to come up and introduce the person responsible, and to give you a little background on why this is so significant.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Mr. Lake, and Mrs. Flotketter. A perfect audit, that's what we're recognizing tonight. A few weeks ago, we had our external auditors to come in and tell you about our audit, and we had substantially met all the requirements of that audit. Embedded within an external audit is an internal audit. We have a Department of Internal Accounts Auditors, and they evaluate the accounts at a school or department that are not a part of the instructional dollars. We have a school that had a perfect audit for two years in a row, Anthony Elementary, and I would like to introduce to you our Internal Accounts Auditor Christine Corrigan, but also to applaud Maria Cabrera, Secretary and Bookkeeper at Anthony Elementary, and the Principal at Anthony Elementary for the 14-15-15-16 year, and that would be Mrs. Stacy Houston. And I'm so excited that Dr. Mayor acknowledges that, that this is something worthy of recognizing, and I'd like to call them for it now.
My name is Christine Corrigan, and I'm the Internal Accounts Auditor for the District. I just wanna say congratulations to Maria and Ms. Houston. It is a lot of work for them to accomplish something like this. A lot of people don't realize what our secretaries and bookkeepers do at a school, and how much is on their plate for them to be so successful accomplishing this. I do want to tell you a little bit about our department, just to give you an idea of what we do, and explain a little bit about what she does as well in that, because a lot of what she does works with us. We are a staff of three people, and we do audit all of Marion County public schools, along with the other, a few other departments that have internal accounts. And what we do is our students, who pay money, to go on things like field trips, fund, fundraise money, ask for donations. They also work with booster clubs. They deal with all of the principals and secretaries, different things like that. They pay money, and that money, therefore, goes in an internal account at each of our schools. What our department does is we wanna make sure that the money that those students pay was deposited and spent appropriately. And that is what our job is, is to take care of our students and our parents' money in our county, to make sure that it's being taken care of. So with that, Maria collects all of that money, takes care of it, makes sure that it's deposited, and works with her principal, assistant principal, and the teachers to make sure that it's being done right. So, our department also works with ticket sales, fundraisers, again, fraud allegations, all of our booster clubs, our PTOs, employee-owned businesses, school stores, the few that are left, donations, we work with all the sales tax, with the state and all the schools, we work with parking decals, so pretty much anything that you spent money in with your kids, that's what we check on. So, and we support our schools by working with our secretaries. We train the new principals when they come in. We train all the secretaries and bookkeepers to make sure they know what to do.
Say hello.
And so Maria does all of that stuff.
Dr. Mayor, Board Members, thank you so much for acknowledging the work that we do. It's not easy, but we love it. It's, it's pretty overwhelming for me. So many times, you hear the bad things very quickly, but you don't hear the good. So thank you so much for acknowledging it. But I would be remiss if I didn't thank some of the people that helped me to do a good job, which is the principal I had, who acknowledged that I was somewhat competent and allowed me to do my job. Kristy Corrigan and the auditing department, they are wonderful. They are a found of assistance for us. Whenever I have a question, if I'm not sure, if I can't remember one of the 50 million things we're supposed to remember, I can always call them. I never get the feeling that they're looking down at me for not remembering that. They always take the time to, to help me and the other secretaries. And they've also fostered a team feeling amongst all the other secretaries. I feel confident in calling any other secretary and asking them for help if I need it. So it's very much a team effort. Yes, I do a lion's share of it, but if it weren't for the help that they give me, it wouldn't be possible to get a perfect audit. So thank you very much to everyone involved.
Yes, I do. Board Members, thank you for letting, for recognizing this, first of all, Dr. Mayor. I am going into my fifth year as a principal, and luckily, Maria was my secretary when I went into Anthony as my first-year principal. And I can tell you, as a brand-new principal, the thing that scared me the very most was the budgets, the financial part of it, the financial management. So thank goodness for her, because she knew everything, and she never got mad at me when I'd come into her office and sit down and say, "Okay, explain all this to me. I need to know." We did that a lot in that first year. And I'm not questioning what you're doing, I just don't know what you're doing, and I need to know what you're doing. Something else needs to be said, especially, I know elementary, for elementary secretaries, school secretaries, they are your right hand as a principal, and they get asked to do so many different things at the elementary level. I know that we do not have as much financial management part of it as a high school would, but our school secretaries one day might be covering classrooms, because there's nobody out there to put in there, because we can't get substitutes. They might be helping wipe tables in a cafeteria. They might be the receptionist greeting parents with a smiling face, knowing they've got all kinds of stuff in their office they should be doing, but they're gonna smile first, heading off many different kinds of phone calls for me, the secretary, making sure that I know what's going on when I call an angry parent or someone else. So just, I appreciate that you're taking the time to recognize what the school secretary does, and it is so much more than that audit. So to be able to have a perfect audit, two years in a row, with all of the other duties and responsibilities on top of it, is just so commendable, and I'm so thankful to have had the time I had with Maria Cabrera as my secretary. So, thank you.
Can I just acknowledge, can I, I wanna acknowledge a couple of things, Ms. Cabrera. Ms. Houston, when you also, I'm not pointing my fingers, but anyways, when they just acknowledged that it's simple, not simple fact, the fact that you had a perfect audit, I was in amazement. But then, Ms. Houston also did elaborate everything that they do, and so for you to make that accomplishment, not once but twice, that is amazing, and thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And then also, Ms. Houston, I don't know if you've seen this meme or not, but it says, "In the schools, the principals, may have a principal, but everyone knows that the secretary is the boss."
I always tell her to everyone who enters the school.
Yeah.
She knows everything.
And I would keep telling her, quit telling them that.
Just when you think about the amount of money, I mean, there's, money is a constant, and to get everybody on the same page, and it even has to be in by a certain time, and I mean, that's amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the 2016, 2015-16 school audit? We already did that one.
It was 14.
Oh, they took off, okay, I gotcha. The 2015-16 school audit for Anthony Elementary. You have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Mr. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the agreement for Bellevue High School to host Florida High School Athletic Association Girls Weightlifting State Championships?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. McCall, and seconded by Mr. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total of $40,976.33. iPads and accessories valued at $1,868 to Bellevue Santos Elementary School from Donor Hughes, $6,800 to Forest High School from Ford Lincoln of Ocala Exposure Marketing and Promotion, $3,000 to Fort King Middle School from Lowes, $1,470.20 to Liberty Middle School from Liberty Middle School Lions Band Booster Incorporated, $1,975 to MCPS K-12 Academic Services from the Silver River Museum, $5,000 to MCPS School Social Work Services Department from Ocala Community Care Incorporated, $20,863.13 to Shady Hill Elementary from Dr. Vincent Palmeir. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall, and seconded by Ms. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed 5-0. Ms. McCall, would you like to thank our donors?
Thank you to everyone that commits their resources to help our students. Our kids are better because of your help and because of your commitment, and we thank you so very much. Thank you. $40,000, that's a lot of private money going to our schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next administrative briefing and work sessions are scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday, February 1st and 2nd, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. The main purpose of the work sessions is to review the proposed 2017 through 18 staffing plan. However, ESOL, English Speakers of Other Languages, background information will also be provided at the February 1st meeting. Okay, all right, and we're gonna move on to board concerns, and Ms. Stacy will begin with you.
Okay. Since the last school board meeting, we had a, I had a great time. I attended the Saturday prior to the Martin Luther King event, the breakfast, and it was really so nice, the food was fabulous, and I felt like I was just at home. When Mrs. Jenkins introduced me, I was sister, Sister Stacy, and I was so excited. And so, I really was at home with my friends there. Part of the entertainment were dancers, little dancers from Oak Crest Elementary School. And the teacher's name is like right here on my head, and if somebody can help me, she's the- can help me, she's the, she teaches PE and everything at Oak Crest, and she also does afternoon, a little afternoon dance class and type thing that she does with the students. And those girls performed a fabulous little show, and I was so excited that when they got finished, I just had to get up and home, and we all went outside and got our picture made together. And it was just so nice. It was, you know, some of these, some occasions are kind of stiff, and everybody's kind of like, huh. This was, they had a nice speaker. Everything flowed along real nice. It got started pretty close to on time, and I wasn't bored for a minute. And so then we rolled on into Monday, and we had the Martin Luther King event at the park and the march, and afterwards, it was so nice because afterwards, so many people at the park grabbed me and talked to me about things that are happening and things that we can do different. And I got to see Rhodia Berry, who I have been looking for for two years, and she's been so busy with a private school that she's involved with. And so she and I got to talk for such a long time, and I got to meet a man that was 90, I think 94-years-old that was there, and he was just charming. So had a really, really great Saturday and Monday. That was, it was just something that I felt like I wanted to share because I really did enjoy myself. Thank you.
Mr. James?
I'm talking on the same line as that. I had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to be out at Dun Ellen on Saturday and to the Martin Luther King March, and it was really outstanding. We had about 20 kids that were recognized for their educational promise. They were on honor roll, and the McDonald's, not the McDonald's, I'm sorry, Wendy's provided a food certificate for all those kids that was on the roll, and they were recognized at the march as students that were really doing some outstanding things in terms of their education promise. And I'd like to commend those, the pastors and the people that really put that together. It was something where you had some really top-notch speakers like Ernie Mills and the mayor and the city council, myself and everybody else to really talk with the kids about service. And that was one of the big things that I think we, sometimes we miss when we talk about Dr. Martin Luther King and the fact that he did, he was about service. Some other things that I would just like to share with you, I really appreciate the staff when I get information, and when you sit and you talk or you send me something and say, hey, this is what we're doing. But I would also like to say, guys, we need to get this as a collective board sometime. I don't want people, I really don't want people to come and stand before the board sometime, and they say things, and we really haven't had a thorough time to digest what they're saying. I'll give you an example now. The magnet schools, I don't know whether we have been spoken to as a board. I don't know whether we did that. But I want to commend Mr. Raymond for calling and letting me know and talking with me about it. But by the same token, I would like for us to be, you know, informed as a board, and then we can really understand what the lady was, the lawyer was really talking to us about. Give you another example of something. I talked to Mr. Grantham, and he said, hey, I'm bringing one of your buddies down here, and I was aware of what he's doing, but I don't know whether, as a board, that you are aware that, about the consultants that he was in. There's nothing wrong with what you're doing, guys. I just, I just don't believe that we, as a board, are being informed before the letter is sent out and things like that, because if we needed to discuss or say something about it, it's already, it's already out. Okay, you're doing some neat things. I'm just saying that we need to be pulled along. I know there's a sense of urgency and things like that, but guys, we need to know what you're doing. I had, it's, it's always important to do things, and I encourage you to continue to do what you're doing. All I'm saying is maybe everybody's getting something different from me, and they, and you all are communicating, but I don't think we're doing as a board. And it was a different story if we were fighting you on what you're doing. But I just think that we need to be informed before letters go out and things like that, because it's something that we ought to move forward. We need to know ahead of time. And I'll give you an example because people think I'm a old coach. If you see a pitch coming, you say heads up, then we can either get out the way or catch the thing. Okay, so this is, this is one of the things that I'm saying to you more than anything else, is in your meetings, it should be, and I know people think that we, we are, everything is critical at this point. I will tell you one thing, it is critical that you bring your board along and tell us before you put those things out there, even though you call us, but you called us after they were already gone. And so that's, that's my thing. And in terms of what we're doing, good job, but heads up, and I appreciate you sharing that with us.
Ms. Boynton?
I agree with you, Mr. I really, I, you really, really said it right. Just thank you, thank you. And thank you all that, I mean, I looked at some of the things you were thinking about, and I really, I really, I was like happy to see one of the things that you were talking about, about, you're talking about the schools. I was just hoping that, that we would have known it first, first. But I think it was something very good, though, the idea that you came was very good, but let us, let it first, let us know it, all of us, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a busy time since our last board meeting. On January the 13th, I had the wonderful opportunity of being in Tampa where Ryan Bennett, the principal of Shady Hill Elementary, was recognized by the Florida Music Educators Association as the state elementary principal of the year for his involvement with music. We're going to recognize him at the next board meeting, but it was wonderful to be there with him and Sandra Collins, the music teacher. On Monday, Dr. Mayer and I actually did that walk, and it was really wonderful. They had about 2,000 people show up for the walk, and I have to admit, I'm guilty. I've never done it before, but I certainly will do it again. It was fabulous, and we ended up at the park, and it was just a wonderful day. On Wednesday, the 18th, I had the privilege of going to the CEP breakfast where Dr. Mayer, her deputy superintendents, and Mark Vianello talked about what's going to be happening with our career and technical education, and I am just absolutely thrilled with all that's going on there. Thursday evening and throughout the weekend, last weekend, I was at the Public Education Foundation Take Stock in Children, their golf classic and scramble, where they recognized Superintendent Jim Yancey as the honoree. What a marvelous event, and it all benefited our Take Stock in Children scholarship program. I don't know how much money they raised. I know they will report that, but I know it was a lot. Closet Made was the key sponsor, and I think they sponsor at about a $20,000 level every year. So it was really wonderful. And then yesterday, I had the privilege of going to Harborview Elementary School where they celebrated 25 years. I remember when that school was being built. I can't believe that it was 25 years ago. And what a great school. It's such a family school. And then, of course, today, at the breakfast that was hosted with the business community and the career technical new wave that's coming. And it was just wonderful, and it's very exciting to be involved. And Mark, thank you for the work that you did because you really set the tone this morning, and it was wonderful. So thank you. It's exciting. I can hardly wait to see what the next two weeks bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lake?
I just had one follow-up comment from the last January 10th regular board meeting, where we had a public speaker that expressed some concern that the FERPA language, which is the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, contained in the code of student conduct of the 2017-18 school year, was somehow inaccurate. She didn't actually identify how. She thought it was inaccurate. But I reviewed that language again, as I have the last two years, and I'm confident the information that we have contained in the code is in full compliance with the Department of Education's Model Notification of Rights under FERPA for elementary and secondary school laws. Wanted to pass that along as a follow-up.
Thank you. Ms. Mark Ketter?
Aye, thank you.
Dr. Mayer?
Thank you. Mrs. Stacy, the PE teacher at Oak Crest is Kimberly Wilkerson.
Thank you. She was fantastic, and the fact that she does work after school with these kids, and it's just all in her own time, and they were, she did a wonderful job. Kimberly Wilkerson.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mayer.
Thank you, ma'am. Brenda, can you hand me that?
Yes.
Today was a happy board meeting, one of the happiest that I can remember, and I think it's because we had the aura of Mrs. King's birthday today.
Oh.
So we wanted to say happy birthday, Mrs. King.
Yay, happy birthday.
It's a pink princess cupcake. Now, it's January and a new year, and moving forward, the early childhood person in me loves to celebrate birthdays because birthdays are such a happy day. I also would like to acknowledge Mrs. Stacy's un-birthday day, which was November 28th, which was on an off week. But moving forward, we'll acknowledge birthdays because they're very special, and it's your special day. So we wish you well, Mrs. King. We wish you well. And I did know, you mentioned earlier, I was playing with you. I did trick you. I did trick you. We had a wonderful letter from Mr. Livingston, who's the principal of Evergreen Elementary, and he sent this the 1st of January, where he wanted to acknowledge some of our central warehouse staff who helped tremendously on December 14th, when at Evergreen, it was an event called Grocery Giveaway Event, where they had pallets and pallets of food that they gave away to people in the Evergreen area. He says that these individuals, who were Amelia Bray, her staff Frank Bell, Steve Wagner, Robbie McKinnon from the central warehouse, went above and beyond. They drove forklift, operated pallet jacks, loaded and unloaded food items, moved equipment, set up tables. And not only did they do all of that manual work exceptionally well, they were such a personal representation of our district and were so happy to be there. So we wanted to acknowledge them, and thank you, Mr. Livingston, for sharing that with us. We'd also like to acknowledge that our own Kevin Christian is presenting at a conference. He is presenting a session called Managing the Media, Speaking Like a Pro, at a conference coming up in Daytona, the FPRA conference. So we are very proud that he is out there sharing his gifts with others. We also have Dr. Absher, and she has, is presenting at a national conference, and she is an invited presenter, which is a huge deal. She is at the National Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Implementers Forum, and this conference has over 3,000 participants. And again, for her to be asked to present is a huge deal, and we appreciate her efforts on behalf of our students and representing us well in the community. Tonight, we had some more mentions of parents and the need for parent involvement. And as we move forward, and again, thank you, board, for so graciously moving forward with that vision that we have for our district. I was thinking about the committee that Ms. Boynton had established a few years ago, and I think we need to bring that committee back as a superintendent-type of think-tank advisory board. So as we move forward, again, thinking and gathering more data and more information from our community, Mrs. Stacy, I'd like to ask you to restart that committee on my behalf, since the infrastructure is there and you've laid it out. So it will be a superintendence advisory committee, but if you'll lead it with the infrastructure established from Ms. Boynton's vision a few years ago. And if you need any upstart, we'll get Brenda or Paula to help, because we need some more, yeah, we need some more data pulled together for that, please.
And I thank you for that, because often, you know, we say, what came first, the chicken or the egg? And Ms. Boynton was our hen, who I believe has laid this golden egg that I think we are going to move forward with. And I think that this community is going to be proud of her for being the starter, the starter of something that I think is going to be great. And thank you, Mrs. Boynton, my friend, the chicken. Thank you so much.
You're doing it.
Tonight's books for Read Aloud, because remember, parents reading aloud just 15 minutes a night to your child makes all the difference. And there is a great, yes, you've seen it, okay. This is a book about, and I've learned that the camera's there. There is a book about Silver Springs and the original photography from Silver Springs back when they had the mermaids in the Tarzan era. And I was thinking that not only is this a great community resource, and as we chat, I'll just open it a few, but it, there's one of the mermaids, that it's also a great learning resource when we're teaching Florida history and local history, because these are the authentic photographs. So as we talk about the greatness that is Marion County and is Florida history, these photographs could be such an assistance to our teachers in the classroom. So this is Silver Springs, the underwater photography of Bruce Mozart. So I would encourage you to take a closer look at that if you are interested in Florida history or any of the teachers out there teaching or just community members.
Dr. Mayer, may I say that his underwater work for the time was absolutely remarkable. He would build, for those of you that don't know, these cases. He would, he would invent and build these cases for his cameras that were not underwater cameras and put them in these cases that he designed, he built, and go underwater and have those fabulous, fabulous photos. It was just remarkable. And I know there's some work going on to try to preserve all of his work. So, but to me, that was amazing because those photos were, there were no underwater cameras.
And that's a great point, because this was back in the 50s, before we had all this modern technology.
Exactly.
And I was thinking too of our friends at Westport High and how the history and the photography could be integrated that way, too. And there's another picture that just amazes me. Okay, so Silver Springs. And Mrs. King, as you and I on Super Bowl Sunday, I don't know what you and I will be doing, a Dallas Cowboy fan and a Pittsburgh Steeler fan, but it's only six months till preseason. Go Steelers. But I wanted to share one of, really, one of the greatest books I've read recently. It's called Their Life's Work, and it's about the Brotherhood of the 1970s Pittsburgh Steelers, so the Steel Curtain, the Mean Joe Green, Terry Bradshaw, Lynn Swan, and how they came together as a team and really pulled it together. And they were so much more than just players on the field. They really had a brotherhood. One of the best chapters in here is how Mean Joe Green filmed that infamous Coke commercial and just the background of it. So perhaps on Super Bowl Sunday, I'll be watching this. And just dreaming of six months until we have our new season, so. And finally, I'd like to share the world according to Mr. Rogers, because sometimes you just need to put on that comfy sweater and curl up and know that everything is going to be okay. The last week or so hasn't been the most pleasant in current events, and some people have, well, kind of been naughty on both sides of the fence. But here is a great quote from him that I think brings it all back home. He says, "When I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers.' You will always find people who are helping. To this day, especially in times of disaster," or I would add, current events and people not behaving so nicely, "I remember my mother's words, and I am always comforted by realizing that there are still so many helpers, so many caring people in this world." So that's just a happy message I would like to end the night on.
Well, that was a wonderful message. You are definitely in the right place, because I'll tell you, Marion County school system have the best helpers out there, and they've been working hard. And I just want to take, take a second and just tell everyone, thank you, in every position, whether you're a teacher, and I can go on, and on the paraprofessionals, our custodians, our auditors, our secretaries, our, again, I could just go on. And so, from your chairman, I just thank you. Also, I just want to add that I did have a chance to ride or drive with the caravan for the Teacher of the Year, and I think.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, you were there. You forgot about that. And it was just very special. What a special moment to walk into the classroom with the teacher and her students and just seeing the pride, and it was just very special. And this Friday evening, we will find out who the actual Teacher of the Year is, and that's always a lot of fun. And also, Ms. McCall and Dr. Mayer, last Thursday, we went to the legislative meeting here in Marion County, and it was, it was, I thought it was productive and good. Our House Representatives and our senators, I felt like they actually listened. And this was the first time out of my, I guess that was my third time, I actually had a senator speak and ask me questions, which I thought was great. And, you know, one thing he did mention, he said that it's coming up that it's a possibility that they're going to put the testing at the end of the year, which is great. But he also made me basically promise, I think, that if they take away some of the I think, that if they take away some of these testing, that we're not going to add more testing, that's what I got from it. So, I thought I would share that with you, that it was pretty good, and we also discussed the PICO dollars and stuff. And as always, I'm going to end on that attendance counts, I understand it is the time of year where there's flu and stomach bugs, if you feel bad and you have that fever, stay home, but if you don't, do everything you can to be in those seats, it's very important, and thank you very much. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January sixth, 2017. Ms. Blockheder, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matters? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JV seventeen through forty-six E. with educational services through the first semester of the 2017-2018 school year?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall and seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? I just noticed that up there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Kevin?
I don't have your passport.
While they're doing that, I did forget one thing, I forgot to tell you, thank you for the cupcake, it's beautiful, my princess cupcake, it's a Betty cake, and I'm not, Betty cakes are yummy.
Just two motions, it's all right.
It passed five zero. Okay, and the motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Boynton, I mean, Ms. Boynton. All those in favor signify, well, moving on, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Okay, and the motion passed five zero. The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two.